Good evening and welcome to the December 7th, 2016, meeting of the Gethysburg Planning Commission. First up is the approval of our minutes from November 16th, 2016. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes of November 16th, 2016, as written to the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. No record plats tonight, according to Trudy. And that takes us to our consent agenda, and there's one item on the consent agenda tonight for AFP-7447-2016 305 Buttry Road, a medium-density residential zone, for a sunroom and deck addition. This is an amendment to final site plan. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
No.
No. All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously, and that takes us to sign permits. And the first one up tonight is for sign-12513-2016, Lido's Monument Sign at 700 North Frederick Avenue in the M X D Zone. This is a sign adjustment, and presenting from staff is Caroline Sidon. Good evening.
Good evening. This is for sign permit, sign 12513-2016, and it is for a monument sign at 700 North Frederick Avenue, which is right here on the corner of Montgomery Village, going roughly northwest, southwest, and north Frederick Avenue. This is the former Lockheed Martin head building through a merger with another business segment of Lido's Innovations Corporation. They are now operating under, I guess it's Lidos, and they want to change their monument sign to the Lidos logo. It is here because under Section 24-212M, which is monument signs, the letter, maximum letter height is 12 inches, and they are requesting a sign adjustment for a maximum letter height of just under 18 inches. And in every other way, it meets the code, so they are just simply requesting that the sign, the letter height be adjusted for the, just those, the L and, I guess, the D are the tallest letters there.
And interestingly enough, we don't have to pass the icon, I guess, huh?
Well, we determined that it was sufficiently abstract, so as not to be an object.
That really sounded like one hyper.
Yeah, really.
Okay.
And that, that is it.
Just for reference, if you wouldn't mind, Caroline, could you put up the site plan where the location is for the monument?
Sure. So, this is the site, the site, the monument sign is going right here where it says E3. It's in the same location that the current sign is, I think, on the, and it's right at their entrance on North Frederick Avenue.
And the overall footprint and size of the field itself is no bigger than what's there now?
Yeah, it's, you can see the before and the after. They're using this, the same base, same lighting.
Okay. Any questions for Caroline?
There's no need to have the, I mean, there is a, obviously, there is one condition on the thing here, but as far as an address goes, just the number would be sufficient in this case?
It is. We, we always request that there is some addressing because of, for, for the fire department likes that, but it, Fred, North Frederick Avenue is a large enough road that we felt like people knew where they were.
Okay.
So, we often will, will allow people just to have a...
Just the numbers.
The number. And the condition relates also to the requirements of the code. There's seven inches is the minimum. They adjusted it, and they just didn't have it marked correctly on, on the drawing in time, so that's what the condition is.
Any other questions? So Caroline, can you step us through just, just kind of a basic reasoning for even approving larger letters, what the, what sort of the driving concern would be to not comply with the ordinance as it stands now?
Well, in this particular case, they're on a major road. There's a lot of other signs that we've allowed. A lot of the car dealerships have larger letters, and they're, it's the only sign that they have out there. Is that what you're, I'm not sure if I understand.
Yeah, I kind of stare at it and think, well, Lockheed Martin was there for how many, 30 years, 20, whatever it was, and tiny little letters, you know?
Yeah.
And that seemed to be okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a fairly substantial entrance, and the sign itself is not particularly large if you drive out. It's not a large sign.
Yeah, I'm sort of kind of reconciling why, why it's, first of all, why it's necessary, but also why, why it's even a problem.
When it was IBM, it was much larger letters, too.
Sure.
And, and also, this is a, it's three lanes going southbound, so you have three lanes of traffic going by.
I don't call the IBM some is taller, too. I think it was a large, kind of pocketed thing that came, yeah.
I worked here for 14 years.
Yeah. Okay, well, good. Do you have any trouble finding it?
No.
All right, any other questions? Okay. Is there anyone here that's to speak on this application? Okay, not a huge crowd jumping up on that one. So, the recommendation, please, Caroline.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibits submitted and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant sign 12513-2016, sign permit, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-212M and 24-213AF of the city zoning ordinance, with one condition shown in your record.
Okay, very good. And just to clarify, the only illuminated part is the letter, not the whole field, correct?
It's not illuminated at all. It's got, you can see the lighting on the, on the ground. It's externally illuminated.
It has that sort of sculpted, at least it's something interesting with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the scale of the building, scale of the site, the, the distance from, potentially the farthest travel line is certainly reason enough to consider a larger sign. I mean, it doesn't really appear to be that overtly commercial and distracting in and of itself, so.
It's a very substantial lot. It's a very large lot, right? Very large entry. Set back considerably from the roadway, so.
Yeah, good. Any other comments or questions concerning? All right, recommendation then from staff is to approve with a condition. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant sign 12513-2016, based on the exhibits submitted, the staff report, and the findings, finding it in conformance with Sections 24-212M and 24-213AF of the city zoning ordinance, with the one condition as written to the record.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thanks, Caroline, and maybe councilwoman, it shouldn't be Lidos, we'll be getting calls for pizza. Of course, they've already, they've already got that established, right? Next up is recommendations to Mayor and Council. We actually have two tonight. First up is Rob Robinson presenting CTA-M-7431-2016, amendments to remove all references to commercial recreation restaurant and amend amusement centers definition and use. Recommendation to Mayor and City Council, and again, Rob is presenting from staff.
Good evening, Commissioners. As the Chair has mentioned, this is the recommendation for CTA-M-7431-2016. The public hearing was held on November 7th, 2016. No public testimony was presented at the public hearing, nor has any been received prior to the commission's record closing. Mass discussed during the hearing and explained in staff's amendment analysis memo that's included in the record. The purpose of the subject text amendment is to better reflect and accommodate the changing dynamics of commercial models and to work, provide something, it's almost house cleaning, but also to work to reinvigorate and sustain the city's commercial centers. The proposed amendment would eliminate the definition of commercial recreational restaurants, so those uses would now solely be restaurants, and amend the amusement center definition and actually provide a clear definition for recreational uses. With that also would be, as was listed, clean up in various sections to have consistency of terminology throughout. As was mentioned, the purpose of the proposed amendment will have the zoning ordinance reflect and accommodate current and future business models, promote uses in city commercial centers, and stimulate the activity lifestyle aspect of non-residential mixed use, remove unnecessary processes such as special exceptions that act, act as a disincentive to investment, and create certainty to encourage investment in commercial centers by creating byright uses and clear definitions. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. And our record's closed, but are there any, there are any pending applications right now that this helps to accommodate or helps?
Actually, submitted, no, but this may come into play early next year. We have some potential sketch plans that are coming online in M X D Zone areas, so this will definitely benefit those.
Very good. Any concerns, questions?
No.
I mean, I'll geek out for just a couple sentences and say that this is really cool stuff. You know, like, it sounds really dry, it sounds really boring, but this is really, really great stuff. Solidification, you know, simplification of, of ideas in, in the zoning text is absolutely wonderful. Promotes both development and better, good development, so thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Well, there you go. Way to geek out.
Yeah, I'm restrained because I have a cold, but.
All right, it's fairly straightforward. We're asked, the staff is recommending, we recommend a mayor and council approval of this text amendment, so is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I recommend adoption of text amendment CTA-M-7431-2016 to the mayor and city council as presented to us this evening.
Second.
It's moved in second. In all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right, that takes us down to our next recommendation, which is for SDP-7354-2016, Crown Neighborhoods 3 and 5 at Fields Road and Decovalley Drive. The plan proposes a mix of uses, including 244 townhomes, 44 single-family detached homes, 82 over-two units, 509 multifamily units, and 15,000 square feet of future commercial uses on approximately 42 acres of land. And again, presenting from staff is Rob Robinson.
Thank you again. Given this, while the record has closed, I as, I have asked Mr. David Ramsey of Westbrook to sit up here with me. I know there will be some, some discussion, and in the applicant's response letter, the applicant has proposed some changes that he wishes to discuss for recommendation by the planning commission, so let me get to that. As the Chair mentioned, this SDP-7354-2016 specifically defines Neighborhoods 3 and 5, as can be seen on the screen now. Included in this application are design guidelines, landscaping plans, road designs, and conceptual architecture elevations for these neighborhoods. As was mentioned, oh, no, this plan is in accordance with the approved and amended X182 annexation agreement and sketch plan C315. As was mentioned, Neighborhood 3 minus the HOA amenity and Neighborhood 5 have a combined acreage of approximately 42 acres, with 244 townhomes, 44 single-family detached homes, 82 over-twos, 509 multifamily units, and these are split between Neighborhood 5, which would be 445 units. And I'll quickly orient you to these two condo buildings, which would be, I believe, a grand total of 32, or 60, I'm losing the math, and 15,000 square feet of commercial uses. Neighborhood 3 is approximately 40 acres, of which 19.5 are green space, and Neighborhood 5 is approximately 2.6 acres, of which .1 acres are green space. The public hearing was held on October 17th, 2016. During the course of the hearing, a number of concerns and questions regarding various aspects of the plans were voiced, including the overall density of Neighborhood 3, the orientation and distribution of green space within Neighborhood 3, the cul-de-sac design at the bottom of Street P, and the council had a question, even though it's not germane necessarily to a zoning, the organization of the HOAs. Given that, I'd like to go one by one, sort of through the questions. As I mentioned, the applicant did send a response letter that addresses many of these points. To begin with, right off the bat, this overall map gives you a sense. Staff decided to sit down and do a comparable density analysis, which is included in the staff analysis. What we did was, we essentially looked at the acreage. We had backed out the stormwater management pond, and then we looked at other M X D Zone communities using comparable acreage and a comparable housing mix. We, we didn't want to skew it where this has two over-twos towns and single-family detached, and only look at a single-family detached community. Wherever possible, we also wanted to align where, where these neighborhoods would potentially be adjacent to a multifamily structure. So, going to that... As was mentioned, and I'm going from the staff analysis, the original design theme of this was to concentrate density closer to the CCT station, and again, Fields Road and Decovalley Drive, which are, you know, sizable, median, separated arterials. So, using the methodology that we just discussed, the actual density for Neighborhood 3 is 12.7 units per acre. So, going down, you can see, and I highlighted in the staff analysis, green, meaning less than, yellow being comparable to, or red being greater. So, of that, Hidden Creek and Lakelands, which I showed, the sections that we took that were comparable, actually have greater density, and in fact, aren't bordered by arterial roads or are linked to potential BRT. Watkinsville Town Center is almost comparable, and that is close to the Watkinsville Interchange. And we did include the Kentlands East, right adjoining the Lakelands. So, going through Hidden Creek, you can see, once again, this was higher. This is a multifamily, so in many ways, it's very comparable to Neighborhood 3 in design. This is the Lakelands and Kentlands, so this side, which is, again, you know, approximately the same acreage, same type of housing mix, actually has greater density, whereas on the other side, on the Kentland side, it's slightly less. Quinçor Park doing the same thing, comes in around 10. And Parklands is almost comparable at 1213. As I mentioned, the staff analysis, based upon this, staff really does not have any concerns with the density and finds that it's very much in keeping with other previously proved developments. I think somebody was just, because we haven't looked at these in a while, it, it may have struck people as like, wow, there's a lot of density up at the top, but when you use sort of the angular transect they use related to the arterials and the CCT station and the multifamily, staff is of the opinion this makes sense. Moving on, we wanted to discuss the green space. So, again, this was included in the, there's no new exhibits being included. This is all stuff that was included in the applicant's response. So, overall, this is, you know, the green space, how it works out. What we had asked the applicant to do is basically to do the walk shed analysis. Again, sometimes looking at a plan in two dimensions really doesn't give accurate views of how things work. So, taking a center point, the dark ring is a one-minute walk, lighter to two minutes to three minutes to four minutes, and as was discussed in the staff analysis, no matter where you went, basically, every green space here, you know, if we're looking at this park, this park, or some of the other pocket parks, are within a four-minute walk of every other unit in the building. Plus, as was, that was brought up during the public hearing, we have, must keep in sight that there's a 32-acre, either high school or city park right there. Staff is of the opinion, given the height of Neighborhood 5, you know, trying to adjust green space really isn't going to create a sense of openness or buy anything. However, staff does recommend that this section right here, in a sense, be de-landscaped and, you know, going forward, be made into a tot lot. So, then we are of the opinion, if you look at Neighborhood 3 essentially in three levels, 1, 2, 3, 4, each level of the development will have a child-friendly, open area for families, so.
Can, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
Not to, you know, move, but you said that Neighborhood 6, you said a, a school site or a park?
That's where the annexation agreement is written. If Montgomery County Public Schools does not have this in the six-year CIP after 25 years, the annexation agreement states it will be a city park.
Okay, after 25 years, okay.
Then they have 11 yet left.
Okay.
So, then it becomes a city park.
It's going quick. It is going quick.
Yeah, no, man.
And it could be both. I mean, look at, look at how Lakelands Park is. But honestly, it could be a shared use. The next topic was not addressed at, during the public hearing, but it was brought up
in the applicant's response letter, and this is, again, why I invited Mr. Ramsey up. They are proposing, making a change to the overall development, and essentially swapping out 28-foot townhomes for 24-foot townhomes. On the screen right now is the location of these 19 units. As I mentioned in the staff analysis, staff is not opposed to this, and in fact, during, going through, staff had questioned the marketability of a 28-foot townhome, that if, if you were going to go there, you're now competing price-point-wise and market-wise with a single-family detached. And, and any logic that, that a single-family detached owner would be drawn to a 28, we sort of questioned, because we really haven't seen that within the greater market. People are going to buy towns, are going to buy towns. Those who have the price point and money will buy the single-family detached.
Okay, so with that proposal, does it net up the number of units?
No, it is exactly the same, because I, I think Mr. Ramsey will be happy to answer any questions. The advantage of going from a 28 to 24, as I mentioned in the staff analysis, does not change any of the lotting or any of the density. The 24 can actually fit, well, well, obviously, will fit on the 28s, ta-da, but it just creates a greater side yard, because these were all end conditions. So, it actually opens up some additional open space on that lot.
So, so silly question, but does that mean that the, the new garage will be smaller? You know, will be, I mean, in, in width?
Than what was proposed on the 28s? I don't believe so. I think they were two-car garages on both, and I think they're the same size.
So, does it, was it two single doors, and now it's just one big door? Is that what the difference is going to be?
I think that's to be determined with, with some of the final architecture, but I foresee, I think the ones out there now are, I believe they're, they're big, single doors.
One big, yeah.
So, I think that'll be consistent, yep.
Yeah, that, because now, I'm sure if you shrunken, you couldn't get two separate doors.
Probably not.
Yeah, okay.
But it's been a, just, just to follow up, I mean, the 20s, the 24s, the 28s, even on conceptual architecture, it was all same-sized garage entrance. It was just wider bodies, essentially, you'd have a larger living room. It really wasn't impacting the garage space, per se.
Okay.
The only housing types out there that have the single doors are, I believe, the rear-loaded, single-family detached.
Okay.
Have two single doors in Neighborhood 2, but not those. So, this is something, and it's reflected in the condition, that the applicant has requested that the commission weigh in on for recommendation purposes, and there's a condition reflecting that should you so choose to go that way, you know, we would amend the plans. The last is really, I, I think, was a, a main point of the commission's, and it was pretty much the main topic brought to light by, by the commission during the public hearing. So, if I may, bear with me one second. So, the cul-de-sac at the end of Street P. On the screen, this is taken, again, from the staff analysis on page 18, this is the current design. So, as we had discussed, the decision was, at that point, Street P would be a public street. We require, you know, no dead ends on public streets based upon city maintenance responsibilities. So, there's a cul-de-sac, we have a minimum of a 90-foot radius on the cul-de-sac. These units here were a collection of 16-foot front-load townhomes. What the applicant has brought forward, and again, is here to answer any questions, is now a redesign, and potentially going back to one of the earlier discussions, listening to comments that the commission made, that this would now be a private alley, and they've also proffered a change in units. So, instead of 16-foot front-load townhomes, they would now go to 20-foot rear-load townhomes divided into two sticks. The advantages of this, as mentioned, are, one, they self-park. We now go from having essentially, you know, one, maybe two parking spaces per unit, to actually realistically having four parking spaces on lots. So, we don't require any off-street parking, as was required in the original design. It is a slight decrease in overall density. Looking at the alley, it does better, you know, it's more harmonious with the alley here. Staff personally appreciates the idea of these looking towards the HOA amenity, and that people at the HOA amenity are not looking at the rears of buildings now. It does open up more usable green space with the loss of the cul-de-sac, and allows greater pathway. I will...
What's the downside?
Um...
No parking in alley.
Not necessarily downside, but I wanted to go to this image to discuss some things, just so everybody's understood, because one of the, one of the questions was about connectivity. And the issues are, over here is a stormwater management pond, so there was no way to connect the public street that way. To the south, outside of the WSSC easements is a Category 1 Forest Conservation easement that was defined under the annexation agreement. So, there was no movement there. Early on, when we first discussed, the applicant had proposed doing a road that loops here and then would go in the front. Our Department of Public Works and staff did not like another public road here right next to, you know, the conflicts of the turning movements, especially when this is essentially your main east-west connection. So, given the, the ingress, egress points right across the street, and already having the entrance to the parking lot to the HOA amenity, we were not going to support a road connection here. So, that was the, that's why, how we came to the cul-de-sac. And essentially, that sort of addresses most of the major points that came out of the hearing. I did note in the preliminary background report, some minor cleanup things that I, that I wanted. They did amend those plans. There's still some further, the planting schedule reflects WSSC's comments. The graphics were cleaned up to show that the handicap spaces adjoining the, the main central park, you know, it's not steps right next to those, it's actually a ramp, just some minor things like that.
Great, thank you. I, I did want to at least create an asterisk to your, your discussion about density. I don't think, at least from the commission, there was as much concern about density as a number as there was from some of the evidence that it really wasn't working on the site. Whatever that number was, it wasn't so much an absolute number, it's that it just didn't appear, especially in that cul-de-sac example, that there were some things that just didn't fit, regardless of whether you thought it was a good number or not. But I think the data you showed about comparable neighborhoods makes, makes a pretty strong argument that it's at least consistent with the, the density we're seeing in, in these neighborhoods when they're, they're resolved well, you know, when there, there aren't funny little details that haven't been worked out. So, thank you for that. Before we get into the discussion itself or the, or the recommendation, what is the process for acknowledging or talking about this, this later entry into the application that shows a little bit different solution to that one?
Um, jumping slightly ahead with the staff recommendation, there, there's nine conditions. The ninth condition, and I, I think we need to discuss this, is the applicant to amend plan sheets and design guidelines, blah, 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 to reflect the design and housing unit change on Street P as recommended by the planning commission. If the commission comes out of this meeting with a specific recommendation, we can make this clear cut, that the applicant is to amend everything for Street P, to change from a public road to a private alley, to, we can lay out what is essentially reflected on this screen right now, whatever way it goes.
Okay.
And I just didn't know how the commission was going to respond to this, so I sort of left it open-ended with the idea that we would make it further defined. The other ones do make it defined specifically, spells out the amendment of the plan sheet to reflect change from 28 to 24.
Okay.
And that would be done before the city council makes their...
No, we would carry this through, and that would be the condition. So, for signature set, all these changes would make, because there's, if these changes are recommended and the council also blesses them, there's a huge amount of plan sheets that would have to be amended, including all the images within the design guides, QA, QC, and all the various numbers, because the density would change, even calculations of green space, everything else. So, to try to get it before council record closed, we may miss something.
Very good. So, Commissioners, I want to propose something. He's, Rob's got four points on here, which are sort of a direct carryover from the discussion we had earlier, or the, or the public hearing, and it's a little discussion that grew out of that. Are there any other issues that you know of or concerned about that you want to put on the table before we just focus on those? Yeah, please.
I just wanted to point out a couple of things, and if you don't mind, Rob, moving to the overall master plan. My first concern is the upper-left, the upper-right green space. It's fronted by the backs of detached, single-family houses.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm...
Northeast, the green.
So, these two units?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
That is the rear of the houses, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Um, I find that, and I can see how it's, there's been an attempt to cover that with landscape, but I find that rather inappropriate for the very few open house, open, open space that you have within the community. I think it, I second what our Chair mentioned about the density, it's definitely warranted, but I think that not at the compromise of putting backs on the only open space that you have. It creates for an uncomfortable, open area, in my mind. The second point that I want to make is that particularly along, when you come down P Street, and you have that long, that cross-section of the long, 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 long alley that extends from one corner of, from one end to the development to the other, I just, my recommendation is that at that point in P Street, you would, there would be a turn of the houses to front that particular street, because it creates for two situations. The incredibly long and uncomfortable corridor that expands for a minimum of 60 feet, and also, if you look at the different houses, and because of the angle of how the street goes and the houses go, you have a direct access into the back of two units, both in the top and the bottom of units, garages, and it's just, again, I, I find it unsightly. So, I think that if you were to front that street, you would have a better opportunity of actually a good quality street, that it's within the...
So, Rob, zoom in on that end of the street. I think I, I think I'm tracking where she's looking.
So, this end here or this end here?
The other. The, the first one you, you mentioned, P Street, correct?
This is...
Yes.
It's not on the screen yet, but, okay, so the condition, where is it? Oh, I thought it was at the other end, that you were looking. Oh, I thought it was at the other end that you were looking. Sorry, okay.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, and I'm talking about th- this units that because of the angle of the street, uh, are left completely exposed to the public realm, which is the street.
So you're discussing like in particular, this unit right here?
Exactly, in the, uh, in the lower one, um, same condition, um, at the other, at the other side of the open space.
So here?
Correct. Why are we not fronting that street?
Are you saying that like the last, the last?
No, 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 like, see, uh, on top, I'm sorry, I, I think in your DD block, um, I.
Let me go to the, let me go to the actual SDP.
I think it will be better if we look at it.
Is the concern that the, the rear and the side facades of those units would not be comparable to the front that would ultimately be facing them if we turn them to, to front that street?
Well, uh, I see an alley as a, um, utility corridor, something that is more utilitarian rather than, um, public realm. And so I wonder if there's a way that you can turn units to front P Street rather than face, um, Street O and Street, uh, in Crown Park Avenue. So at that end, you would have frontage that extends the whole, um, length of the block.
And there's actually a good precedent for that. We have other, other development that uses the end unit with an end unit, end loaded entrance essentially. I mean, even, even still, even though the driveway still comes in from the, the muse or the alley, it has a front door, it has a front presence on the, on the street that it's, it's fronting, right, as opposed to the, the alley.
Cause we have the opportunities here, unlike, unlike in neighborhood two, remember, we just didn't have the space. But we did that, um, for the rear loaded, single-family detaches that front, um, Steinbeck. We made those all side load. And then we worked on the elevations that the front, you know, so essentially we had essentially two front elevations.
Well, maybe an architectural solution rather than a site planning solution. But what I don't know is, when you call that out, if there's a, if the lot actually takes you to the sidewalk, or if there's actually a, a sliver of land there that really belongs to HO, you couldn't cross it with a, you know.
Here's, here's the lot. So this is the actual blow up of that section of the SDP. So what is white is the actual lot, what is not white is HOA property.
So the question is, everything on P, the, the end units essentially in those sticks.
So we're, I guess we're looking at Lot twenty and Lot forty.
Correct.
And potentially Lot eight. Well, well, twenty-one is a front, so this is the front. So coming down here or coming up here, you're not going to get that view shed on this angle. So we're only really dealing with coming, coming southbound on P, you see the rear of twenty, you see the rear of forty.
For the moment, just, just don't get so specific, but the point is these end units don't have frontage on P Street.
But I, I don't think you, I, I'm, I'm getting my point across. My point is, I think that you should have parcels fronting P Street rather than, uh, having the alley run straight through.
The whole plan's turned. You're saying the alleys come off of Street O, it's the.
No, I'm saying you have front, uh, units fronting P Street. And then you turn the alley, so the alley, uh, comes out of O Street and at, uh, Crown Park Avenue. So you don't have, uh, it's almost half a mile corridor of alley that you will have, um, if you're at any point, um, you're standing on that point in, in P Street and you look down a bit, you have, I think based on the, um, five, four-minute diagram, I think that it's about a good half mile of nothing but an alley.
I think. I mean, I, I hear you. And I think we did discuss it earlier on in terms of major and minor streets, the major grid and the minor grid. And we kept market in O as the major grid. The east-west travel was more important than the north-south, with the exception of the main, of the main street. I can't think of the name of it right now, but, um, but P was not a main street, P was a secondary street. And then that was good. The alleys were going to feed off of that and all towns were going to face O in the primary east-west streets.
And, and while I totally see that, uh, that intention, uh, within the plan, I think that, um, it's, it's gotten to the point that it's affecting the alley corridor and the quality of the street. Because three, uh, P Street, um, even though it's not a primary street, it still have enough presence that I feel, I just don't think.
The alley should run north-south and not east-west.
At that point, and P Street. I think that, um, from then on, you can have your corridor and, um, your alley and, um, keep it that way.
If I could make one comment to that too, and this goes back to something, John, you just said about treating it architecturally. Um, I think back to neighborhood two where we have our north-south streets that run in similar conditions to these units where you have the alleys perpendicular to those north-south corridors. And in our design guidelines, we're proposing high-vis treatments on, um, the facades that face these streets, but also the, the alley end units, they're called. So where these alleys return back in close to these main streets, we treat them as high-vis units. So the rear of those first, in some cases, maybe even two units, would be treated as almost a front elevation. And we did that in neighborhood two, and it really did have a nice impact. If you drive down.
And not just that, I mean, I think one of the things we're losing sight of is, within the design guidelines, we require a screening at the end of all these entrances, just as we did with neighborhood two. And once again, it's one of four. It's either the masonry and wood combination, it's the masonry and landscape, landscape solely or full masonry. So, you know, as you go along here, it's not as if you're looking at sixty feet unencumbered of width going the full length. Every one of these entrances onto the public street will have, you know, structural screening at the corners just intentionally to break up that. And we did it with neighborhood two, in addition with the key lot plan.
It was effective.
The hype, the, the, the point on the table though is, if you treat Street P, and you probably need to get a plan up there and just leave it there for a minute while we talk about it. Right now, the nature of the streetscape is you, you drive along and you're, you get a unit, alley, unit, street, unit, alley, unit. So it's, it's sort of broken up as a, as a side street. It doesn't feel like, like a front, you know, main street, it's just a cross street type of, type of personality. Which may be okay, but the point is, that's what you've got there. And just taking it at face value, if the end units were never, were only facing the main street or the main alley, whatever, or where they're oriented, and all you ever saw were the sides of these things, it'd be a very, a very secondary street. So there's, there's a couple of questions on the table. One is, should it have, uh, should it be laid out such that the alley never hits P Street? Should it be turned out before it gets to there and, and dump into one of the other cross streets? Thereby leaving a full-blown, essentially streetscape with just residential facades along it. Or do you preserve that in a fairly clean way on the cross east-west, high, east-west streets and leave the, the north-southern ones for that sort of service, kind of secondary use? I don't know the absolute answer. It's a question on the table, that's what we've got to figure out. But if you leave the north-south stuff as sort of a very secondary side street, almost like an incidental, um, side street, then what happens at the ends of the alleys and at the end of the townhouse unit sticks is worth discussing about whether it's just a pretty side or if it's in fact the front of a unit that's facing out and you've essentially turned ninety degrees with what, how you're addressing the street with the building. And that's an architectural solution, it's not necessarily a change in the lottery, a change in the orientation of the alleys. But I think that's what you want to, you want to focus the discussion. Are we really talking about reorienting the main, um, road hierarchy? Or are we talking about doing a better job with the north-south streets? Especially in that bottom two blocks where they're, they're so chopped up by the, by the.
Yeah, and, yes, that's a precise little point. I think that my main concern is, uh, the public realm and how we are addressing it. I think, uh, right now, it leaves a lot of questions. And, um, so having posed that, um, that concern, I wanted to go back to the, uh, to the green. And, um, I think we jumped, um, really quickly to the P Street concerns. But, um, can you speak a little bit to the northeast, um, green space and the, uh, units backing to it?
So you're discussing these?
Yes.
Um, in what sense? I mean, I would remind the commission that in neighborhood two, we have twenty-five units backing onto the Pill Park in neighborhood two. And neighborhood two, green space wise, has about the same amount of green space, square footage and percentage wise with, as neighborhood three does. So to have two rear load units, I mean, you know, back on, that, that's fine. But I, I want to make su- sure, you know, that if, if this was an issue, I, I, I'm not debating that, but we have already, right across the street, you know, approved far more and far larger that back on.
Okay, well, assuming that part of the plan for a minute, let's, let's finish that discussion then.
Are those key lots?
They are.
You want to give us a little bit of a, a blow up there? Are they, um, what's the parking at that point? Are they, are we looking at a drive, enough space for cars to get off of the street there at that point? For those units? So effectively three units that, that have a pretty good backdrop to the park, in the green space. And you would characterize those as key lots or as?
We would, if we treat them as key lots.
And what is the setup for those? Are rear load or front load? Rear load?
Rear load.
All right, with no driveway?
No driveway.
They just have low curb cuts, fair about half, though, half the back of the building.
Have you considered, um, adding, uh, other units to the green space? Or, um, would that im- impact the overall, um, square footage of the green space need, um, the area needed of your overall neighborhood requirement?
Uh, I wouldn't follow you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Have you considered, um, adding other units in the, uh, to that green space, um, to back to the alley?
When you say other units, do you mean other?
Um, townhouses, tower houses, something that, um.
Well, now discussing putting units here.
Correct.
Shrinking the green in.
To shrink the green area?
Correct, and I, but I'm wondering if, uh, you're at the max of your, um, overall area because it's, um, highly dense.
We didn't consider putting additional units. Then we actually tried to maximize that, that green space to make it as large as possible, um, and as usable as possible.
I like that. And my initial reaction to this alley was that not seeing a driveway on those, I was concerned that they would be, um, well, there's, that, that, that that was inappropriate too, because you couldn't get the cars out of the way, right? I mean, you were just sort of cramming in close to the back of the alley. But I wonder if that's not an opportunity to make those every bit as a, a front of a house as, as anything, right? I mean, you've got essentially like a front-loaded unit facing the park. So with a little bit of care, those could actually have a fairly nice edge quality to the, to the park itself. As opposed to just being the random assortment of windows and cheap siding and a couple of garage doors that might end up on the back of it otherwise.
You picked your most decorated units and put it on the edge of the park.
Well, I would think you'd want to do something like that, but then, then you would essentially have your front, you know, you could have a front to backdrop the park as opposed to just an arbitrary alley elevation.
That can definitely be addressed architecturally, but I, um, I think that a better solution would be to consider to treat that as an alley and, um, have a different frontage to the green. That's just my personal opinion.
I'm worried about eroding the amount of green space though by adding units.
This section here is stormwater management, so I mean, we're already taking out square footage. So what you see here hatched is the ESD for this area, so this is where it perks.
Cause I wouldn't want to see us reduce the amount of green space to solve this problem.
Well, I understand that, you know, there's, uh, two unit, um, there's the front quality of, you know, the front door and your primary, um, entrance to your house, but then there's, and then there's the back side of your house that has a utilitarian aspect of it. And I don't think that we want to detract the homeowners and impose with the, um, a two-side and fronted house um, because there's the green there. I think, um, you know, this is a planning stage in which we should address, um, the fact that there's a utilitarian aspect of this, um, plan and that it's in front of the green. And the public space.
You want to look at the elevations?
Well, we're not through yet.
I have looked at the plan, I mean, I don't know how they.
Are you talking about fifteen too, or are you just?
No, fifteen is fine.
So without solving it, the point would be that, I think, if I look at this right, you got the street, maybe zoom in a little more, Rob, just, just to pick up on the boundary streets there. Street. I, is it I or T there?
T and then S.
All right, T is ultimately going to be fronting, um, something else, either park or a school or whatever one day. So that's, that's a relatively, that's going to be a front right there.
It's a primary street.
I think the strategy right now is the park seems to want to be against a public street so that it's accessible to more people as opposed to surrounded or enclosed in a, in a series of units. Cause you could imagine, um, you know, flipping that with some of the units around the site north-south and sort of inboarding it a bit so that the, the homes face into it. But I don't know, I mean, I think, I mean, it's, it's worth asking the question, what, what's, what's possible there? I mean, you heard the concern, I mean, what, what is the?
I mean, the option is do away with all the units, make it a large green. I, I think the precedence is we have this exact situation in neighborhood one with the MI townhomes that actually back on to the neighborhood one green. And it's only separated by Alcott Street, which is only slightly larger than this alley. We have the precedent in neighborhood two where all the same front load or small, single-family detach, you know, twenty-some units back on to the Pill Park. So we have this, we have two units. I understand the concern. I, I'm not concerned about the lack of driveways because as was shown, you know, within this block, there is over, I believe it's like one point two on-street spaces per unit in this block. So all visitor parking, except extra part overflow parking is accommodated for. It's the question, you know, if you put in a stick here, i- it's, it's the loss of green. So if the, the concern of the commission and council at public hearing was the amount of green space to reduce it, to put in additional density, I, I don't see what's to be gained there.
Then, uh, take out the units and extend it all the way to T Street.
That, that's an option, and that's what we're looking for the planning commission to recommend. If that's the recommendation, you know, we, we can have that as in the recommendation.
Because they are single-family units though, I think, um, I would, I would like to at least present what they could potentially look like as key lots. I think it's going to be a lot easier to create a single-family home as a key lot that would have a much larger impact than just a standard townhouse as well. So I'd like an opportunity to at least present that before, um, you know, we talk about just eliminating the units. I mean, if you look at the warmol homes that are out there now, the back of those units are fantastic. I mean, you know, I could stare at those all day long and not have any concern.
Yeah, and I, and I, I also think there's some planning strategies that could, that could get you out of this hole too. I mean, for example, um, there are good examples of turning, so if you look at those last three, maybe, maybe there's some geometry where you turn two facing each other and they share a walk that runs up to the park from one of the streets. And then you, you don't have a back on, I can't get this right in my head, but I, without studying it, I wouldn't know. But yeah, there's other, other strategies that maybe get into that point where they, they sort of fit a little better. I'm, I'm, I agree with you, one of the solutions might actually be architectural, but, but I think the concern on the table is that little park is, is not as big as what's happening over the other side in neighborhood two. So it, it has, it's going to feel the pressure, whatever's, whatever's up against it more than those other parks. It's, it's a, it's a very precious little space, and so whatever does form the edge of it is very, very important, of course. And, and that has to be solved for. I think it's, I think it's a great thing to call out that if it's, if it's the back of a house, then it's got to be a really, it's got to be the front of a house that looks, or the back must look like the front of a house. Or it's got to be another way of thinking about how to cite those couple of houses so they really do, um, create a boundary or create an edge that's, that's appropriate for that, for the park. And I think that's part of the recommendation that, that we need to, we need to push on.
Do you want to make a, a condition?
We can, yeah, I mean, just this sort of discussion right now. The other point you brought up, Rosalie, about the alley, though, I want to make sure I understand exactly where this, where this discussion needs to, needs to focus. So, um, let's, let's pull up, find out if you would, Rob, where. Where an example of that condition exists with the, the alleys running out to P Street?
Sure.
Okay. So I don't see an immediate solution for rerouting the alleys per se without completely rethinking the scheme of the whole, I mean, it would start to ripple out from where some of the decisions have been made about major thoroughfares and, and major connectivity. But it does raise the question about how to treat P in a way that, um, that's more, more of a street and less of just a, a secondary, almost like a super alley in a way. And we don't want to see things like the back of a townhouse that's not, not thought about as a, as a high, highly exposed unit and not think about the potential for the end unit addressing the street and doing some things that could really be interesting and be appropriate for the, for the, for that whole area. The most telling thing to me, Rosalie, is that the ge- geometry of the sticks themselves never really respond to that street. They, they just run out parallel to the street they're on and then they just sort of leftover triangles at the end.
If I may interrupt for a second, um, Rob, can you, uh, swing out a little bit?
Zoom out?
Yes. Just looking at it, um, I realized you have this walkway after, um. Just looking at it, I realized you have this walkway after Lot Six and Lot Fifteen. I'm wondering if after Lot Three, you crank Lots One, Two, and Three. And you do the same for the bottom three or four, and you use that walkway to connect through. So rather than, that would basically shield your Lot Twenty from having that back. And it will also crank the alley so you have a better.
I'm sorry, I'm losing you.
Okay.
So you're talking in this block?
Yes, so you have a walkway between Lots Six and Seven, correct?
No, you do not. Because one of the things we didn't have is the issue that we had in Neighborhood Two was by creating a public weird two-foot, three-foot HOA parcel, we had difficulties with that. So our guidance on this one was have the property lines go to the property lines and not create these weird HOA maintenance nightmares going through.
Okay, there's a gap on the plan design.
There's a gap, but there's a gap because of the setbacks, there's not necessarily.
The lot lines are joined there.
The lot lines are joined there.
I think the technicality is, and I think where this is headed, is the transition to the turn, to the angle, should happen somewhere in the stick of townhouses, not after the townhouses and just with the residual.
So you're saying the split should be actually between Three and Four?
Correct, and then you crank, and those townhouses should be cranked in order for there to be two, an actual perpendicular access to the P Street.
And actually, you called something that I hadn't noticed, but you're right, the alley has a hard turn right after you come off the street, which is not particularly a good, that's not handy either, you're going to end up driving over that, you know, beating up the grass and it's going to be, yeah. So I think it's a good thing to look at, whether that's three units or two units or something that's appropriate. I think you're right, the geometry would straighten out a little better.
And in spite of what the setback or that opening is, you have a green that is on the north side of Old Street that you may want to continue at that point when you crank the trees, if you crank those townhouses. But it would solve the problem of having the back of Lot Twenty exposed to the street.
Absolutely.
And it would, it actually works best for you because it creates a terminated vista on Lot Eight across the street on. Yeah, across the street.
So to give it some quantity, where do you think, I mean, I see it's very obvious on the, oh, now it's gone.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to get a better idea, to get a sense with what we're talking about, where else this could occur. So if essentially after Lot Four, you shifted this break to here at Lot Four, make these perpendicular, you then have the shield, but the break is here. So does, would the commission have any issue then with this necessarily a stick of five? So this slightly moves over, but you now have the perpendicular here. Remember, here, there is another issue, that's not necessarily feasible. This issue here with this green space is based upon utilities underneath. So we really don't have the option to bring these up to go perpendicular. I understand, but I just want to make sure, if we're looking at Street P going from the top to the bottom. So again, creating, moving essentially this break to here.
Rob, it's actually a fairly isolated area, it's along P Street, those, probably those three sticks is to simply make the alignment work where at P Street, it's a perpendicular relationship.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure, because obviously, with this, with the recommendation, I'm going to have to craft the language. Because again, any changes of the plan would come subsequent to council action and have to be listed as a condition for the signature set, so I want to make sure I'm clear. Instead of just randomly, you know, saying, do a break, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Here's the problem, okay, I hear what you're saying. We don't know until somebody draws it, I mean, it may be three units or maybe five units, who knows? I mean, because the, you know, but there's conceptually something about cranking the end of those three sticks around so they're perpendicular to P.
I'm totally on board.
I don't know how many units it drags with it, because you don't know until you start to figure out the geometry.
I think it's less than what you were just calling out, so I think it's like Three and Six or something. But you've already done it in one of the four quadrants. If we've managed to sort of whittle this idea down to this piece of P Street, you've got four quadrants there, you've already done it on one quadrant, you just need to do it on the other three. You've already done it on one quadrant. So here, so you just need to do it on the other three. I'm trying to figure out how this one would work. It's already done. You need to do it on the other three.
Lot One, Lot Twenty, and Lot Forty.
You're already back. You might be overcomplicating, it sounds like we've maybe reduced the idea down to a concrete idea.
I think it solves the issue of having a long corridor and exposed backs without altering your overall mass of fun.
See, you have four corners of that P Street, that piece of P Street. You've already done it on one of the four corners.
But it cleans up the turn too, it's like, I mean, see that alley how it has a hard bend right after you come off the street? That's going to end up being a problem anyway.
Yeah, but this. It fixes the alley, just like it did. I don't know how you get a break on this one. It's already done, Rob.
I don't think we would break it, I think we would just.
But you're saying, so you're just saying just strictly just this entrance? No, you have four corners to that P Street block. You've already done it on one of the four corners.
So the row with Lot One, the row with Lot Twenty, and the row with Lot Forty.
Correct.
Well, Forty's already.
Forty's already.
I mean, you can give it another one or two degrees and finish it. But you see how, you see how in that Twenty-One, Forty block, it started to fix the alley, just like they're saying as well.
And I think your fundamental problem is you've established the street grid with the turns and the shift in the axis, but the houses didn't follow, you know, that's what they need to do, they need to hug the contour, hug the shape of the plan you've already established.
I think it's a tiny change in a certain planning standpoint, but it's a nice one.
As the brain comes. And hey, with CAD, it's easy to change.
I just want to make sure we identify the correct sticks in the correct block.
So I think the recommendation is this, Rob, if you go to P, to keep it a general recommendation so that the engineers and designers can figure it out specifically. It is that, Rusali, correct me if I'm wrong, it is that the alleys all engage Street P at ninety degrees. So there's a comfortable bend in the right place, so they do that. And then the units that are leading up to that intersection are also parallel to the leg that comes in at ninety degrees. I don't think that that one alley where it does it at about eight feet off the edge of the street is enough. I think it's got to get back in there farther before it turns the corner.
So here.
So across the street from that, you can see it's like this tiny little dogleg. And those units are left kind of hanging way back from Street O. They should be up against Street O, addressing Street O like everything else does. The alley should follow it in probably three or four units and then make the kick to the left. And the row across the alley from them should follow suit, you know, it should follow that geometry so there's a nice, comfortable transition from the street onto the alley and then around the corner. And then we get the nice broken, the view shed is a little bit broken up, which is nice. We don't get those odd angles of the whatever facade we end up seeing on the ends of those units against Street P. And it cleans it up in terms of a nice streetscape as well.
Yeah, it takes a sixty-foot radius in the alley to make it a four-hundred-foot radius, you know, it's really, it's a softening of the alley as well.
Does that make sense? Now, do you need language? Actually, I should add, should take a breather here. So my question was, we had four issues kind of on the table. I think you raised two more, was there anything else you wanted to get into the discussion before we sort of start to step through these and resolve them for our recommendation?
No, I mean, I understand, going back to the green. I understand what Rob is quoting in terms of what has been done in Neighborhood Two and the several units that are fronting the back. I think that the nature of those several units, which are on a different scale, have worked because of the large amount and because of the scale of the space. I think that this particular is, this particular green is very intimate and it has a very specific, it's going to fulfill the need of breathable, open space for this community, which I find incredibly uncomfortable in spite of the precedent in the previous neighborhood. And I would strongly just, yeah, I would strongly suggest something else will be done there, not architecturally.
Well, I think our recommendation needs to point to either fewer units and just increase the green space and be done with it.
Or decrease the green space?
Or.
Or decrease the green space?
Oh, wow, I don't want to do that, I might even put it down on the table.
Or a swap of units.
Yeah.
Staff wouldn't be supportive of, I mean, we only have so many single-family detached to lose three.
No, you don't want to do that. But a swap might work, but I think the.
If you potentially, if the commission's going to the direction of extending this green and you have these three, I'd rather see these three fronting the green here and lose this stick of towns.
Yeah, that might be the way to resolve it, I don't know. That's the danger of the discussion, I don't think we can sit here tonight and solve it. I think we have to, we have to give direction to fix a specific problem with a specific strategy. And I think what we're saying is leaving those blocks the way they are, or leaving those units as planned and just assuming it's going to be a facade treatment is probably not good enough. Is that fair?
Yes, thank you.
So that's the recommendation, I mean, obviously, it's to the mayor and council to act on.
So the formal recommendation is, because this will be another condition?
Is to probably evaluate the relationship with the park and the units.
Here's my concern, though, we're approving preliminary subdivision. So the evaluation comes back with this at signature set, you know, two weeks after it gets approved potentially by council.
Okay.
If you begin changing this, then we're amending an SDP. So when exactly would that occur? Because the next time this body would see it would be at final site plan. And at final subdivision, you wouldn't have the ability to mandate changing the lot.
Let me put this back on you, we had a public hearing, right, we brought up half-dozen issues. This is the first time we've had a chance to discuss what our recommendation was going to do to address those questions at public hearing. Right, so unless you're proposing a work session where we sit down and sketch what the solution's going to be, the only thing we can offer right now.
You have the ability, you have the ability to call for the work session, we can reopen the council record.
Okay, I was being facetious, I don't really.
No, I'm being serious, if this is something of this limit, this may warrant a joint work session with the council there to hear this.
In any other site planning situation, something like this would be an issue we could raise and have staff resolve at a technical level. So I don't know why it turns into, it has to be a whole nother meeting or a whole nother work session. You know? If we said we don't like the way units front the park, find a solution that makes more sense, that would happen. And you would either come back with a consent or a, you know.
At final site plan, not at schematic development plan, that's not the way the code is written. So that's the issue that I have.
All right.
Well, the one thing is you could defer your recommendation, that's.
Yeah, but I don't, okay.
You could announce the reopening of the planning commission record, you could defer the recommendation that would allow the applicant to work out some sketches specifically geared towards the comments raised this evening above the stuff already addressed. It would then be entered back into the planning commission record, and then the discussion could occur from there. And then the only thing is we'd have to send a note to reopen the council record.
Okay, otherwise, the SDP would establish the preliminary plat.
It's preliminary subdivision, so, and the way the code is written is it basically locks in lots. So any changes to lots or any of that stuff requires an amendment to schematic development plan. So that's why, it's not like a final site plan in, you know, necessarily a classic Euclidean zone where you can dump lots. We don't have that flexibility with this.
So how does that, just to jump ahead briefly, don't, let's not get on this track just yet, but what does that do to this proposed sketch that's down on the southwest corner of the site that we just saw? That becomes a recommendation to go do it?
We can still have the discussion if you decide to reopen the record and.
No, no, okay, so tonight, right, you guys came in based on public hearing comments and based on staff analysis and showed a potential change to this plan down in the bottom southwest.
Bottom of Street P, so Street P would convert from a public road to a private alley.
So taught me through that process, what have you said, great idea, go do it, what happens?
That's condition number nine, so that's why I said, that is the, you know, to amend for signature set.
For signature set.
Yes, so it'd be after, so the plan that was presented to you today would still be the plan that goes forward to the council. But the conditions, talking about what came out of the discussion, the swap of Twenty-Eights for Twenty-Fours, the redesign of Street P, you know, those are definitive actions that the council will weigh in on if they approve, those are conditions. So those changes would be made to the plan sets prior to signature set. So the final SDP approval would reflect those changes.
So lacking any real solution for this small park frontage, the only option would be then to reopen the record and start the process back by some number of steps?
Not a number of steps, I mean, it's reopening the record, we can determine, you know, even if we look at calendars this evening, you know, how long you want the record open and which meeting you'd like them to come back with to address specifically Street P between Crown Park Avenue and Street O and the park. The other issues, you know, we've talked about unless there's other issues from the commission to deal with. And then at that subsequent meeting, you can make the formal recommendation. It's just, if you do that, again, because of the nature of when the council record closes, I just have to get something for them to formally extend their record.
So would Street P require that, the stuff we've talked about to none of that, or do you feel comfortable that could just be done as an after?
Candidly, if we're coming back, I'd much rather have them sketch something out for the commission to look at and either go yes or no, as opposed to try to infer or interpret what's wanted.
I've done all the talking, what do you guys think?
I mean, I kind of see where you're going, but that would give them the opportunity, are you clear of what we're talking about, what we?
I think we need to explore our options, I mean, I think that's kind of where we're all at, we can't solve it tonight.
Right, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, this can't be solved tonight. You need to have an opportunity to go back.
Right, and I think what we're feeling too is we're a little back into a corner because we came out of the public hearing with some issues, but we haven't had a chance to discuss it yet. And now suddenly, we're looking at a discussion on some of these issues and it's up against a deadline to get something in for approval, which we may not be ready to say we're, we know.
And that's perfectly valid, I mean, that's why this option, you know, as we go before public hearing, staff just has to come up with a record that's not saying that it's scripture and said in stone.
Okay, so I think it's safe, I think it's safe to say that there's enough discussed tonight that we would probably get to take a deep breath, have the applicant look at it for some reasonable period of time, two weeks, whatever is appropriate, come back with a way to address these questions or these issues in sort of a holistic way. Because it may end up being a little bit of a, if you have to swap a unit here and put it there, whatever it is, that's okay and it might help solve the problem, but it's not something we can solve by just staring at an existing plan tonight.
I mean, Rob, you mentioned the option of a work session, how does that play into the whole process?
That, candidly, while that is an option, that's something that could very much delay the project by months. That would be at your request, opening the record, then we'd have to go to the council and essentially go to the city clerk's office to find out when there is an open date to do potentially a work session.
Right now, there are not too many open dates.
Because we're heading into budget season, so.
I'm just looking into what implications that would happen.
No, no, it's fair, that's why, it's my role to let you know of all the potential options, you know, but.
And while we're bringing up, I think, some really important issues, I don't feel like it's of the magnitude to reopen the work session.
No, I don't either.
I think it's more of a technical.
Right, I think we should let them go back, they've got enough information.
It would be a matter of days before we'd have something ready to bring back to you guys.
So can we have this on the next, if we gave them the opportunity, can we bring it back at our next meeting?
I think for the reality, given we only have, you know, really, this meeting.
In December, that's it.
This is our only meeting in December.
I think the realistic one, given the time for them to do work, get through the holidays, potentially, I think, the second meeting in January is realistic.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
A resolution, the second meeting in January.
So what do you guys think down here, are you recovering the issue?
Just to make your job a little bit harder too, I think the Street P idea of cranking the sticks to an angle. I'm sorry, the Street P issue for me is a valid one to get changed and you can't really do that in a subdivision, you know, without actually doing it. So I think that is a delay. The other piece, the park piece, I disagree with, I think the back of the single-family homes is a great way to treat that park. So I'm in a minority opinion potentially. But the Street P is, I think, a good change. And because it's subdivision, you're going to have to move those lines, so it's going to have to come back.
Is that something that can be treated at final site plan or not? Because we're not essentially amending the lots or the layout.
This is preliminary subdivision, so this is what the plat builds off, and our code is written that final site plan, lotting-wise, has to match the SDP. And it looks like they're going to have to shift, I mean, it's minor.
Right, I didn't know if that was.
The lot finds themselves, the legal definition of the lot will change.
Right.
So again, I mean, given some time, I mean, you have, could we come back at our next meeting? Would that be enough time?
I believe not.
No?
Candidly, the first Wednesday of January, in order for them to get time, to get stuff, for then to get to me to have to write the new report, everything else given, the short weeks with Christmas and New Year's. That's why I think the second meeting, the second meeting in January, plus you have to have a record. So I mean, we're going to have to, you know, you're going to have to make a motion tonight to reopen your record to a specified date.
I think they could probably leave it open until the. I, I think they could probably leave it open until the, to the meeting.
Frank Trudy, I mean, would they be able to close the record that evening? I just want to make sure they have it open enough to, you know, allow them to submit whatever they wish to submit.
Okay, let's get organized. So we have two new issues under discussion tonight. One is the fundamental layout of P and the alleys that intersect that. The other is the enclosure of the small park in the northwest corner, northeast corner of the site. Is there anything else new that needs to be on the table? Any concerns? Okay.
Well, there's the third issue that staff brought up for the cul-de-sac. So we haven't discussed it.
Right. Well, what I was going to go to next was the four points that you brought back from the public hearing, and that was included in that. So just to be clear, the question of overall density, I believe, with the planning strategies worked out, is not a concern of the commission's mind?
It was a semantic problem. I think we just used the wrong words. Whoever used that word. It wasn't about density, it was, it was about planning.
And I don't even really editorialize about that so much. It's just asked, is anybody concerned about the density?
Nope.
No, quantify it. Okay. We talked about the specific green space in the northeast corner. What about the distribution of green space generally across the plant? Does that, does that seem appropriate the way it's been?
Better than it was.
The bubble diagram, not the specifics. Okay.
Yeah, I kind of like the large east-west corridor that we have cutting through the streets and stuff.
We have the proposal on the table for the cul-de-sac resolution on Street P, which will come along. I, I think we could bundle that in terms of what we're expecting to see back with a fully resolved Street P essentially from north to south. So it would include the intersections plus the cul-de-sac. And by the way, for, for direction, I very much like the approach of having those homes face the, face the amenity and have that as a backdrop to people coming from the west. And, you know, I think it's a much more appropriate space and it gives back some green space. So I think it's a, it's a good resolution.
My only question with the amenity is, the parking for the amenity, could that also be utilized by those particular houses for visitors? Because it is right across the street from them. Are there any restrictions on the amenity parking? That's basically the question I have.
Um, I don't think it's anything formalized, and I'm sure, but if there's nighttime events...
I think it probably would get used for guest parking.
I think it probably will get used.
Yeah, we'll throw that out, right?
It's not something we're going to put in the parking chart as announcing these spaces or accommodating the 20-foot towns.
And the last point was something about the organization of community associations. And I don't want it to be on our discussion record if it's really not relevant. So what, what was that about? Or what's the concern there?
Um, let me go real fast to the particular page in the staff analysis. So the, the question that had been raised by council was them just trying to figure out how, because there's sub-associations, so they had requested that the applicant provide how three and five and the condos within three and five work within the greater concept.
Do we have anything to address on that in an SDP, a recommendation?
No.
Okay, so let's take that off our, off our concern. All right, so we've got the three from the public hearing, the two from tonight. Any other direction required? What you need now is a motion to open the record until second meeting in January?
Or we can just...
Just open the record.
Just open the record, because what Frank and Trudy are saying is you guys can actually, when we come back, second meeting in January, you can announce the closing of your record to begin that section.
All right, so I'm going to ask you that so that I can ask the applicant a question while on the record. So is there a motion, please, to reopen the record?
I move that we open the record on SDP 37354-2016.
Second.
It's moved to second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes unanimously. Okay, for the applicant, now that we're on the record. Are you clear on the concerns we had from the discussion tonight and from the public hearing?
I am. The one thing I would ask on the green space for 12 to 14, I know there's some mixed opinions about what should front that. Would you be willing to look at architectural treatments on those buildings as proposed, per the lots as proposed on the single-family?
I think, I think what has to be discussed is a couple of options. I, I don't think we can sit here tonight and say that's the right solution, nor can we say that these units is the right solution, nor can we say turning them 90 degrees. We don't know. But we need to resolve...
But for the record, I can, I can envision an architectural solution.
So can I.
That's one.
I would also like to say for that.
But, but just to be clear, I don't, I don't think it would be appropriate to come up with just a...
Of course not. I just, I was trying to make sure you'd be willing to review one as, as one of our options.
We'll review anything that solves the problem. Anything else that you would need for direction or for...
Um, may I ask a question then? I, I know we were focused basically on two of the conditions of the nine. Some of the other ones, you know, if we're going to have a chance to amend somewhat of the plans is the direction. I guess, one of the things is, would, would the commission have supported staff in their request, you know, where we were talking about this area being de-landscaped and be set up as a tot lot, as if they're going to amend plans? I'd just as soon have them start amending some of these plans.
It can be an and/or, right? It can be an optional subdivision piece? Is that what you're asking?
Well, right now, if you look at the landscape set, it is so heavily planted that there's no room. The discussion that we had, you know, about tot lots...
But we could have a final site plan.
But, but I mean, it's one of these things, we just as soon, you know, sort of, you know, amend the landscape plan now.
Okay.
But why do you have to tie it down to one at this point? Why couldn't you just say it's this landscape plan or an optional, you know, young child play area to be determined?
It was and/or, right?
If that's the direction you want to do, that's, that's fine.
I'm not, I'm feeling like it's a little too prescriptive and a little too granular at an SDP level. That's, that's sort of my bottom-line sense right there. I don't mind the, I don't mind the recommendation from professional staff. I think it's probably a fine recommendation. But I don't want us to get wrapped around that kind of detail right now until we solve the bigger SDP layout.
Okay.
I can imagine deferring that to final.
I, I think I hear what you're saying. We want to get the language in there that there's, there could, this could be a kid lot. The applicant's prepared for that. Yeah. But to me, it's an add or, it's an and/or. You have to move it around. If it works somewhere else better, if the staff, you know, comes up with a better idea.
Anything else you want to attack? I mean, the, the conditions are fine, but I don't, I don't think those are the issues we're trying to resolve.
No, no, but I, I was just, of, of the position, a lot of the conditions were, again, dealing with a revised plan set following council action. If we're now going to be revising plan sets prior to council action, I would rather know, you know, do you support all the various conditions so they can begin amending all the plan sheets now?
Let's answer your question directly. Why don't you go through me real quickly?
So the first one was to reflect the conversion of 28s to 24s.
That's fine.
Okay.
Good.
Condition two was to amend the landscape plan to reflect open space fronting Street N in Block EE to be less landscaped in order to facilitate, you know, a tot lot. And part of that was because it was the centralizing. I understand Commissioner Hopkins where you were coming from, but this one I sort of wanted locked in, so it's set up for final.
Okay, you don't want to give an adjective, you don't want to give it potentially?
Yeah. Three was to amend the plan sets to provide consistency in lot numbering. Some of these, we did unit count, some of them did based upon plating, lot and block numbers, so we just want consistency.
Sure, sure.
Um, amend the landscape plans to gra, so the graphic symbology reflects the plant schedule. I mean, they changed the plant schedule, they didn't change the symbology.
That's fine.
Five is coming from our fire marshal, so it's an additional attorney movement. Six doesn't deal with revised plans. Seven really doesn't deal with revised plan. It's something to look at when we come to final. Eight doesn't involve SDP plan sets. Nine dealt with the conversion, potential conversion of public Street P to a private Alley P.
Right.
So that obviously will be part of their revisions. And then whatever we just discussed, the rest of...
Sure, and if you knock any of these off in the course of getting that, that last round of changes done, then we have fewer conditions. Okay, what do we need to do now to wrap up this discussion tonight?
For the record, I'm certainly in support of, of the alley at the end of P as opposed to the public street. Did we discuss that at all?
Fair enough. Yeah, I guess I should get a more of a nod from everyone.
Yeah, fine.
Yeah.
Good, good.
So I think Frank and Trudy, I have a turn to you. I know they reopened the record. Do they need to make a motion for deferral till the second meeting in January?
That would probably be a good thing to happen.
Okay, staff is recommending we make a motion for deferral of our recommendation to Mayor and City Council until our second meeting in January. Is there a motion?
Just the 18th, January 18th.
Second.
It's moved to second. At all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That passes. Thank you all very much.
Thanks.
I think we're on the road to a better plan, so thank you very much for working with us on this.
See you in 2017.
Thank you.
Excellent, okay. I'm sure I'm in the right place on the agenda. The next place we go on this agenda is to site plans. And the first up is, I'm running this, yes, Jasmine's up, so I know we're in the right place. ASDP-7407-2016, 15710 Shady Grove Road in the MXD Development to construct an 8,233 square foot Carvana fulfillment and a 70-foot height car display tower. This is the amendment to the schematic development plan. Presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening.
Good evening. So staff is before you requesting a recommendation for application ASDP-7407-2016 for the property located at 15711 Shady Grove Road. Just to refresh the commissioner's memories and anyone who's looking at the meeting this evening. Application is for the construction of a new 2,000, or, sorry, 8,233 square foot Carvana automobile fulfillment center and an associated 70-foot tall display tower. The applicant is also requesting a parking waiver to provide more than the maximum number of parking spaces on-site. This application comes before the planning commission pursuant to Section 24-198(c) of the city code. This application was presented to the Mayor City Council on October 17th as a courtesy review, which at that time, the council directed staff to have the amendment be referred to the planning commission for public hearing and recommendation. A public hearing was held by the planning commission on November 16th with the commissioner's record closing on November 30th. During the course of the public hearing, there was no comment from the public. And also, at the closing of the public, uh, planning commission's records, staff hasn't received any public comments. Five additional exhibits were added to the record. So during the public hearing, there were some points brought up that was discussed during the public hearing. And I'm, in response to those points, the applicant has submitted a response letter. And I was just going to quickly discuss each of the major points. So the first major point was about the amount of lighting in the car display tower facing Interstate 270 and the, its effects on the adjacent properties. The applicant had submitted a kind of preliminary photometric plan just for the display tower. And according to the applicant's statement, the photometric plan shows that from approximately 50 feet from the tower, there are no more than .01 foot candles of illumination projected by this car display tower. And the applicant has also submitted a site plan showing the setbacks on each from Interstate 270 and the adjacent properties. And according to their statement, this, the lighting on the car display tower will not have any adverse effect to the adjacent property. This other point was about the signage on the shared access along Shady Grove Road. Now, since that road is part of the county, the applicant is going to have to get approval from Montgomery County for signage on Shady Grove Road. There was a point that was brought up about maybe having a shared access improvements between the adjacent property owners along Shady Grove Road. Stating in the applicant's letter, they agree with the commissioner's comment. And they do intend to reach out to adjacent property owners about maybe improving that shared access on Shady Grove Road. But since that's located within the county, they would need to reach out to Montgomery County for those improvements. But at this time, any improvements on that shared access won't be part of this SDP application. And the last point was about truck turning movement going northbound Shady Grove Road. Currently, you can't make a left going north on Shady Grove Road into the property. And commissioners asked applicant, well, how can you get trucks on the property? So the advantage of Carvana is they own their own truck services. And they are using a five-car hauler trucks to transport their site. And they are willing, they're actually able to direct delivery drivers from Shady Grove, Shady Grove Road via Interstate 270 going south on Shady Grove Road to make that right on the property. And they also submitted a onsite and offsite truck turning radius plan with the application. And staff has reviewed and approved of the truck term on the plan. In conclusion, staff is supportive of the response letter that was submitted to applicant. And I'm available gladly to answer any questions we have this evening.
The condition about art in public places, how does that work if they really don't have a public frontage of any, or really any access at a public level?
So within the Gathersburg Arts and Public Spaces Program, there's an opportunity where developers can make contributions to the program. So not having art, but...
That would be the, that'd be the likely solution to this. Okay.
A lonely piece of art.
They have a sculpture, it looks just like a car. The, okay. Any questions on the presentation? Is anyone here to speak on this?
I do, well, I do have the applicant here this evening.
Actually, the record's closed. The record's closed on this. This is a schematic development plan, so the record's closed.
Got it. Okay, the, I would recommend, and tell me if you, how you would best recommend doing this. The access improvements and the signage, I think we want to see something definitive by our final site plan. Would that be reasonable or, you know, whether it's a, a formal chain of correspondence or something that, you know, I recognize and I respect that at SDP level, you can only sort of promise to go look into this. But I think by final site plan, we want some kind of a definitive effort and resolution to what, what the possible...
It's hard to approve a use that may or may not have continuous access to. I'm sure it does.
Yeah. So I don't know, I'm looking at Jasmine and Trudy kind of together, what you might recommend as a condition or as an assumption on this?
I mean, I know for the signage that they can, including plan.
Do you remember that signage for automobile dealerships has to be approved by planning commission? So any onsite signage within the city would come for you guys?
Yeah, I think what I'm looking for is a definitive strategy for signing the project. Given that it's off, really off-site or it's, it's, it's in a different jurisdiction, what will the strategy be? Because we wouldn't approve it otherwise, right?
Approving a commercial use for fairly isolated property, and we're concerned that this use will not be, you know, viable if it's not indicated, you know, at some kind of public street.
Well, we can certainly, we can certainly, you can certainly add a condition saying the applicant to bring in a sign package, a proposed sign package at the time of final site plan.
Yeah, I'm actually more, what I'm really talking about is this whole issue that's really off-site. You know, it's not going to be in our jurisdiction, so I, I just, some, some definitive strategy on what they're going to do. Because we obviously can approve it.
Well, is there anything that they can provide on behalf of the county?
They can, they can provide, they can provide their sign package. Not, not that you would be approving that one sign, but they can, they can bring their...
Evidence that they have filed.
Right, yeah.
Evidence they filed is great.
That's fine. And the other is the, the shared improvements, that there's some, some sort of an upgrade to the, the access point. I don't know how we kind of work that into a final site plan.
I think that's something the county would... I don't think that we can require that because it's the county.
Could you put the site plan back up? Maybe I'm not...
What this doesn't show is the, they don't own probably about... Their lot stops, and then there's the access that's in, under county jurisdiction.
So, again, similar to the sign hall, I'm really asking for is that by site plan, final site plan, there's some demonstration of an attempt and a resolution to it, not we intend to go ask and find out about it? That's, that's kind of what I'm getting at.
Design isn't the issue.
Just that there's a definitive strategy, one way or the other. You know, was attempted...
Committed quality egress and ingress to a commercial property in the city that we're approving a use for.
Okay, I mean, it already has...
Okay.
The, the approved, I mean, it's had it for the last...
Right. And does it have a maintenance easement on it as well?
Right, we had, we had some, there was some indication in the initial presentation that there was a little bit of a squishy understanding about who owned what and who had access to what and...
Yeah, I heard that too.
Okay.
So that's all I'm asking, is that in addition to our finals, we get a really solid business?
If it's rock solid, then we're done. Yeah.
Just delineate is what you're looking for.
Yeah.
I think it's fine.
Because anyhow, kind of goes with the viability. We want to, we want to see businesses succeed. So we also want to make sure the access is well-done, is, you know, appropriate for the business and is, is for real.
Okay.
I doubt they would want to, you know, sign off on their final lease or purchase of that. But it'd be good to know that the site plan has been resolved.
Good to be part of your record that has been addressed.
Yeah. So I think it's a condition that's just to show, demonstrate, give me the language, Frank. I don't know what it is, but it's...
Well, the one is condition that they have sought approval for the sign.
Well, not so much sought approval, but they have a, that is their plan to submit for permits. Because usually people aren't asking for permits until they own the property or they have the building permit in hand.
Okay.
What I've done before is just submitted a letter saying, you know, this is my letter outlining the signage code ordinances for the, for the other jurisdiction. outlining the signage code ordinances for the, for the other jurisdiction, and, and these are the reasons we meet that ordinance requirement, and we will have a sign that's, that meets that requirement.
That should be...
And then, and then that, that letter usually goes over for me.
Okay.
Well...
That would be fine. And then the other condition on the, um, access, just, it sounds like that may, there may be either an agreement or some sort of document already in place, but just something delineating that...
Mm-hmm.
So that, uh, so that the record is clear.
Exactly.
That they're, they do have a right of access.
Yeah, yeah, that's all we need. Any other concerns on the SDP? Now, we'll see one more time at final, right?
Yes.
Okay. For landscape and things like that.
We're in two conditions then?
Two, two plus the existing two.
Okay. Um, record's closed, but I wanted, looking for an nod from the applicant that, that we're making sense up here for, but to... Um, come on, Chris. Go ahead and ask the question.
Can I approach?
Absolutely.
Why'd you go to...
So far, no, just, it's fine, just don't say anything when you enter into the record.
Sure, thank you very much. Chris Ruland, uh, with the law firm of Blurtrein Brewery. Um, you're generally in the right ballpark, I think, in what will be work, uh, what will be workable for this at site plan, um, but just a couple of clarifications that might help with the wording, I think, um, starting with the off-site signage, um, issue. Um, we're certainly, uh, happy to explore that and intend to explore that, but I, um, would just throw out the reminder, with this particular use, the, the customers who are coming here are by appointment only, um, whi- which does have an impact on the signage, and there is a sign, uh, program, um, that's contemplated that would put the signs on the building as well. So, um, just to make sure that that's, don't be surprised when you see the package is more than just that off-site sign.
That's fine, so you're still missing the wayfinding piece though.
Yeah, right.
If I'm driving down the road, how do I get to you?
Right, and that, and that, and that comes to the...
Address.
Right, and that comes to the second piece too, the, the, uh, with, with respect to the shared access improvements as well. There is an easement, uh, in place that allows for ingress and egress through the property, and we'll be happy to provide that and show how that works when we get to the final site plan. That's really a question of if we can make other improvements, um, in that access, uh, in collaboration with the, uh, with the other adjacent property owners.
An additional maintenance agreement would be great, if you have it, we'd love to see it.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get our ducks in a row on that, but, but that's, that issue, again, um, had to do with making some changes that might, um, might allow other kinds of trucks to be able to use the ingress and that kind of thing. So we're, we're going to be looking into that, and we're, we'll be happy to demonstrate our success.
Okay, that's all we're looking for.
Sure.
Good, all right. So that ends up being two conditions on the, on the approval, right?
Two, two additions.
Two plus two.
Four. All right, very good. Any other concerns, questions, discussion? All right, so we have, um, we actually have two, um, two recommendations, promotions. The first is on the schematic development plan plus, um, four conditions, right? So is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Planning Commission, that we, as the Planning Commission, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings of the final staff analysis, approve amendment to schematic development ASDP seven four oh seven, two thousand sixteen, and adopt resolution with the four conditions is read into the record.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes unanimously, thank you. The second recommendation from staff is that we approve a forty-five space parking waiver to the maximum number permitted. Again, just, just to ground it, Jasmine, correct me if I'm wrong, but the current parking calculation is essentially a commercial parking lot, whereas this becomes car dealerships, which have always historically needed more space for inventory and, and storage, and that's, that's what this is for.
That's correct.
Okay, any concerns with the additional parking?
No.
And I, and I might add, not that, not that the record's open, but it's probably already on there, that they're actually reducing the amount of paved area, even though they're increasing parking, so we have a, we have sort of a net improvement there.
Considerable, yeah.
Okay, that's right. All right, so with that, is there a motion, please, on the parking waiver?
Mr. Chairman, based on the evidence and testimony submitted into the record and the findings of the final staff analysis, move that the Planning Commission grant forty-five space parking waiver to the maximum number permitted, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash two-two-two A B of the city zoning ordinance.
Second.
It's moved in second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, good luck.
Thank you.
Look forward to the, the final step. See you all soon. All right, uh, that takes us to, um, our second site plan item, which is AFP dash seven four five eight dash twenty sixteen, six thirteen North Frederick Avenue, the C two general commercials, um, for an eight hundred fifteen square foot showroom addition, and this is an amendment to final site plan and presented from staff, it's Chris Berger. Chris, thank for hanging out tonight. And to the applicant too.
This is a real education, by the way.
We're all, we're all doing it for the first time.
Staff was before you tonight to present AFP seven four five eight twenty sixteen, Acura showroom edition. The subject property is at six two three North Frederick Avenue and is located in the Gateway subdivision. The property is owned C two general commercial. The property measures eight point four acres and contains five auto sales, service, and showrooms buildings, including the Acura showroom. The applicant Cars DBI LLC requests to construct a two-story, eight hundred and fifteen square foot addition to the Acura showroom. This application comes before the Planning Commission in accordance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code, which requires commission approval for amendment to site development plan applications. Joining me is Mr. David Horstford of Cars DBI LLC, and we will now go through the plans.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
So, first we have the site plan, and I'll zoom in on building in question, eight two three North Frederick Avenue, the Acura showroom, it's an L-shaped building.
So, Chris, is this so old now, it's historic, and you have to bring this?
It's getting close. It's getting close. I am too getting close, I've been there the whole time.
Is there anything you'd like to add on the site plan here?
Uh, no, nothing to change on there. It, but basically, it's just, uh, a requirement from the manufacturer to have a showroom that of a certain size to accommodate the number of cars, and we're doing an internal kind of branding update.
Sure.
And they're requesting that we add this additional space.
Okay. Yeah, no impact of parking is really a very...
Nothing at all.
...impact improvement.
Yeah, it's pretty simple as far as I'm concerned.
And moving on to the actual plans, here's our rendering of the completed addition. As you can see, they'll retain the canopy, which exists, and they're just essentially squaring off the ends.
Okay. Any changes to site lighting, uh, building lighting, is it all...
No, there won't be. I, because it's squared, you'll have an additional, just, there's lights around the canopy area there, but you'll just have two to supplement what's already there.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be any kind of difference.
But you're not reaching out into the site with new, a new lighting scheme or anything for the...
No.
Okay.
Here's the existing floor plan, and moving on to the addition proposed floor plan.
Put a fifty-foot tower in there. I had your idea once in a while, so I'll leave an eighty-foot tower there. So they could see me from two seventy.
That's the spirit. We wanted a skyline, just not that kind of...
And here are the elevations, I can zoom in if anyone would like.
Right. Yeah, I must say, I, I'm, I'm, it's just, it's impressive how, how healthy the, the car, that sort of critical mass of car dealerships, and, and how, you know, how it's, it's maintained a nice, refreshed, you know, it gets refreshed periodically, and it's...
Still money going to the properties.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's really good.
The committee's over there.
It's a little shocking.
Good, any, uh, any questions on the app?
No.
No, very straightforward.
Yes. And, and I'll have to say, cause the cameras aren't pointed that way, there is absolutely nobody in the audience right now. All right, um, Chris, go ahead with the recommendation, please.
Yes, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, based on the exhibits submitted, the applicant's testimony, and the staff report, findings and recommendation, grant AFP seven four five eight twenty sixteen, Acura showroom addition, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with the one condition.
So just kind of detail, but is there some issue that Department of Public Works is worried about to ask for a traffic study? I'm not used to that on a facade renovation.
Um, to speak on behalf of Engineering Services Chief Mon Power, in the applicant's statement, he just gave a sentence that a traffic study isn't required, he just liked more elaboration on why it's not required. So, I don't think he necessarily wants the full traffic study, just more detail as to why.
Right, they just said we don't have to, they didn't say why, they didn't...
Exactly.
Okay. Cause there's really nothing happening that would change the pattern.
Yeah, this, I would like to say I'm gonna be able to have more people come in because of it, but that's...
It's an explosion of customer activity.
Yeah, yeah, I'm open, but...
There isn't a known, just to be clear, there isn't a known problem that either staff or, or somebody is...
No, there's not.
Okay, all right, very good.
Great.
All right, any other concerns, questions? Nope, all right. If not, that would mean we're ready for a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that based on the exhibits submitted and the applicant's testimony and staff report, that we grant AFP seven four five eight dash two zero one six, um, final plan approval, um, finding it compliant, um, with sections twenty-four dash one seventy and twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code with the one condition that was read into the record.
Second.
It's moved to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously, thanks very much, good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for continuing to improve the, the business environment.
You got it, thank you.
All right. Um, that takes us to, uh, from the Commission, Lloyd, may I start with you?
Yeah, I don't mean to beat, beat a horse that isn't dead yet, but, uh, and I don't wanna see anybody die because of it either. Kentland's Boulevard really is a problem, particularly at the circles, for crossing at night.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's dark, and tonight I had a near-death experience myself crossing Kentland's Boulevard.
Yeah, specifically the circle that's by, essentially by Panera.
By Panera.
That, that intersection, there's a combination of mature trees that are blocking what little street lighting there is, and, um, and actually, a lot of pedestrians, which is great to see frankly.
Yes.
And some pedestrians, I think, coming over from the, um, senior housing.
Senior housing, yeah.
That need a little bit more time, and, and, you know, I, you're absolutely dead on, we gotta have a look at that.
There's no, there's no...
Absolutely.
Yeah, well, I've, I've actually gone to members of the city council and volunteered my time, and volunteered solutions, and I only got a response of, oh, that's a good idea, but no one's ever followed up. I followed up twice with emails and still haven't gotten anything off the dime.
Let's amp that up, Trudy, can we do that?
Pardon?
Let's amp up that, that concern.
Can we get that?
Can we get the...
Put it to somebody?
Well, I'll have...
Trudy Hamer to follow, Ollie.
Yeah, well, Ollie, you know, I've talked to Ollie about it, and he said, well, we've looked at several solutions, and this is what we've got so far, and that's, nothing else has come of it. So I'm a little frustrated by it, and...
Yeah, and I'm, I'm frankly seen enough near, near, well, near-miss is the wrong term, cause I never, but almost hits, let's call it that, to be very concerned that it's gonna take that before something happens.
And, and, and what happens is, I, I, and I live not that far from there, is that folks get in there, and when there's a car in there, they try to beat the other car, and it just gets...
Right, it's a race.
Yeah, it's a race, and it's unfortunate.
You know, sadly, it's, I mean, I call it, uh, roundabout, it's meant to keep the traffic going, and right now, it's just not the right solution for the intersection because we have a high volume of pedestrians going, and they, uh, it doesn't encourage to slow down this, uh, this speed.
Right.
There are solutions though. You can leave the roundabout, and there, there are lots of solutions, and I, I would even argue, I mean, life safety is important, not getting run over is important, but it's, but there's a, there's also a large planning idea here too, that we're trying to get people to walk.
Right.
From one or the other, and not have to drive across.
Right.
So, there's, there's the perception of, there's physical safety, and there's a perception of physical safety that will encourage walking, both of those have to be addressed.
Correct.
And they're not, they're, I totally agree, those, both those intersections are, have, it has not been addressed, and we're losing pedestrian traffic there, and we're also in fear of actually losing pedestrian traffic.
But, I mean, with all due respect, I ha- I have to say, yes, there may be solutions for a roundabout, but I think that it may be who, closer look to this intersection, the, um, the cars, the pedestrian traffic, and perhaps a different configuration, because the current configuration is absolutely not, absolutely not working.
That's fine.
And clearly, clearly that, that area has evolved and, and grown, and, and that's a good thing.
Well, I, I might make a suggestion that you email the mayor and council and ask if this could be put in as a CIP budget item, because we're, you know, we're...
It's that month, isn't it?
It's that time of the year.
Okay, excellent, thanks for bringing that. I'd meant to...
And I, myself, and my children, and my husband, will have had near-death experiences in that intersection.
That's not good.
It's getting bad.
Other than that, that's it, thank you.
All right, next one. Matt?
Uh, nothing for me, that's good.
Okay?
Just happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Uncle Danny.
Nothing for me.
Let me, uh, let me just mention, and, and tonight's actually kind of a little bit indicative of the year we've had, it's getting busier again, and, and things are getting, which is, which is a good indication that things are healthy, and redevelopment, development's happening, and, um, people are investing in the city, so all that's great stuff. So just, I, I wanna take a quick moment to say to the staff, congratulations on a, on a great year. I know you've been, you've been operating down a couple, you've gone through some transition, but, boy, having, having the quality of the packages stayed right up there where they, where they always are, and, and staying on top of, you know, a, a very diverse array of applicants and citizens and all, so, so good work, and, and I, I just wanna say, I really appreciate what you've done to help us get prepared for these meetings, cause I think, um, you know, we'd be, we'd be in sorry shape if we didn't have that, had a little expertise, so, so nice work. Please, please let your, your staff and colleagues know how much, uh, we appreciate all the work that's going on this year.
Yeah, we all enjoy competition, and I can tell you, a lot of your competition, a lot of the other jurisdictions don't have that level of care in their packages. That's really great.
Yeah, so excellent work this year, guys. Um, so, staff, what do we got?
I have something for you.
Wow, you wanna sit down?
Oh, excited, let's see, present.
It's very exciting.
As you may remember, Diamond Square Shopping Center came before you, uh, the Commission on June fifteenth, twenty sixteen, um, for a comprehensive sign package, which was approved by the Planning Commission. They have since then submitted their signs for permitting in accordance with the approved comprehensive sign package, um, but as part of that, they have included two icon signs. Um, since the Commission only has one meeting this month, um, we would like to bring these two icons to you now, and for approval, so that we can get their permits approved prior to twenty seventeen.
Okay.
Um, so one of them is for Play More Games, which is on the screen now, um, it's a, I believe, twenty-four sided dice, um, the sign, icon itself is two feet by two feet.
He doesn't know.
And...
And...
He's got one in his pocket.
He does, yeah. He's got his lucky one in his pocket.
The other one is for Diamond Cleaners and it is an icon of a diamond. Staff is supportive of both icons. And if the planning commission is in agreement, we just need a condition or a motion.
And, and these came in since our package was done, but we realized that we do not have a second meeting in Janu, or in December.
Sure.
And we really didn't want to hold these up for that.
Okay. Well, just for the record, if you wouldn't mind, why don't you zoom in on those two icons more carefully and then we'll, we'll look at them formally. I, I don't have any problem approving them tonight on the fly, do you?
I don't know.
No, no.
It's definitely a diamond and not some kind of hidden icon, right?
The applicant did a very thorough presentation when they were here.
What's the, what's the...
Can you show that?
Yep. Oh, sorry.
It's time to make a joke about it too.
No, no, no.
Okay.
And it doesn't look like a dreidel.
Okay, all right.
I've never heard of a 24-sided dice, but I don't play enough games apparently.
Grand opening, I think, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's...
Oh, okay. That's...
Yep. Okay. Any, any concerns?
None.
All right. What do you need for a motion?
So, staff recommends the planning commission grants or approve the sign icons as presented by staff pursuant to Section 24, 212, sorry, 212J.
Separately.
Two, two, yeah, two motions would probably be the, the two icons.
And did she give you the sign application numbers?
She did, yes. So, it's signed...
Why don't you do this?
I'll do it.
Do one at a time. Do, do the application number and the recommendation and then we can say some little bit of that ahead of it.
Yep. Sign recommends, or staff recommends that the planning commission grant sign 12866-2016, Diamond Square Shopping Center signage. Let's do the Play More Games sign pursuant to Section 24-212J of the city code.
So moved.